Thank you for this opportunity and for this day. We ask you to continue to bless and keep our staff and our city. We ask you to please be with those who are working on the battlefields, as well as those who are our first responders in all areas. Thank you for each of our council members. Ask you bless us and keep us in your name. These blessings we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
All right, pledge of allegiance.
Councilmember John Deворcas. Councilmember Lilly Anne Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Ken Gibson. Councilmember Will Brisington.
Here.
Councilmember Russell Stahl. Councilmember Dorothy Dow. Mayor Knox Wright. Mayor Protem.
Here. And we have the minutes of May 22nd. Are there any corrections or discussions? If not, then the minutes will stand approved and submitted.
Mayor Protem.
Yes, sir.
Are we going to have our screens? Oh, there we go. Look at that. Someone's on it.
All right. I think they're coming. We have a list of citizens who wish to speak to council tonight. And so I will call them. We have three minutes. If you please give your name and address there. And I will call, okay. I will call each one of them, and we thank y'all so much for coming. Matthew Smith. Okay. Mr. John Slipski.
Hello, my name is John Slipski. I live at 43 Tindall Avenue in Greenville. I am here to, once again, speak in favor of the proposed development code. As I have stated before at the city council, the most significant issue facing the city is how we will manage our future growth and development. The city's master plan provides the vision and goals that will shape how we manage this growth over the next two decades. However, making progress on these goals will not be possible if historical patterns of growth and development are continued. The new development code provides a much-needed update to the city's land use and housing policy framework. The code will move the city to a more urban zoning concept and emphasizes higher density and promotes more multifamily housing options. By directly growing to higher-density mixed-use nodes, the code will help preserve traditional neighborhoods in our limited green space. This pattern of development should also create a new range of transportation and mobility options. The code also provides for incentives that advance the development of affordable housing. We must recognize, however, that implementing a more urban-form-based zoning framework represents change. There will continue to be neighborhood concerns. While acknowledging these concerns, we must be focused on the very real health issues affecting our community. As Greenville continues to grow, housing affordability will be at the forefront of our long-term growth issues. There are many issues associated with housing affordability, but supply is an overriding factor. In Greenville County, net housing production has not kept up with household growth. This has contributed to housing prices that have far outpaced inflation and wage growth. Increasing housing costs are impacting a broad and growing segment of our population. While the city is undertaking several steps to increase the availability of affordable housing, to truly address our long-term housing affordability issues, the supply of all types of housing, rental and owner-occupied, will need to be increased in order to meet current and future demand. This will require a regulatory environment that enables density and multi-use development. The proposed code provides the zoning framework necessary for the type of development that will be needed to address our long-term housing issues. It is a forward-looking zoning plan that balances growth with important community priorities. I strongly recommend city council approval of the modified draft of the development code. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ruth Patton.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ruth Patton. I reside at 6205 Conway, Greenville, South Carolina 29609. My topic this evening is affordable housing. I am here on behalf of the people who work hard and serve you with a beautiful smile every day and make sure your visit is as pleasant as possible and only making $2,000 an hour praying for tips right here in the city of Greenville. But they are living in missions, motels, and are homeless. Disability people receiving $1,224,000 a month with all savings gone and raising children, praying for better days. Some things we go through in life are out of our control, and all we have to rely on is our faith. So I pray that what I am saying will go from your ears to your heart. And I pray that your heart would be good and fair. And for me myself, I am a disabled person. I have worked all my life in Greenville, South Carolina, and I'm raising a daughter. And I wasn't expecting to be disabled. But I ask y'all to please to look out for us disability people and us, the ones that's working downtown Greenville and serving you all. You know, I just pray that y'all be fair and good. And thank you so much for listening to me. Y'all have a great day.
Thank you so much. Erin Predmore. Excuse me, Predmore.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today about the new Greenville County, sorry, City of Greenville Development Code. I'm Erin Predmore, the executive director of Greenville Connects, and we're advocating for increased transit resources. I'm also the chair of Impact Greenville, a group of nonprofits working at the intersection of affordable housing, land use policy, and transit. This development code is a wonderful outcome after months of transparent and inclusive planning. The city staff did an excellent job letting everyone know about the process, and their active listening during meetings where concerns or suggestions were raised was impressive. I also want to commend the city's commitment to revisiting the code in six months to adjust for any unexpected consequences and to ensure that the outcomes being achieved are the ones as stated in Greenville 2040. Impact Greenville is happy with the code, but we do have a few lingering concerns about a few items. We're excited, though, to keep working with city staff and look forward to helping to monitor the outcomes as we move forward as a community. Thank you so much. We hope you support the code tonight and this rational approach to development. Thank you.
Thank you. Sherri Barrett.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Sherri Barrett. I live at 5 Calhoun Hillway in the city of Greenville, and I'm the land policy director for Upstate Forever at 507 Pettigrew Street in Greenville. Upstate Forever strongly urges city council to adopt the new Greenville Development Code and zoning map tonight. Once enacted, the new development code and zoning map will usher in a new era of managing growth throughout the city with the intent to achieve a more urban development pattern, a much-needed, long-overdue paradigm shift away from the current inadequate and fundamentally inadequate regulatory framework that is impeding progress toward the community's priority goals. Residents and other community stakeholders have participated and have been heard since this process began in 2019. GVL 2040 emerged through that process in 2021, the result of a public process through which consensus was reached regarding core values, priority goals, and the future envisioned for the city of Greenville. The Greenville Development Code is based on those values and priorities and that future envisioned in Greenville GVL 2040. The draft code and map have been shaped by compromises and concessions. Even so, while not perfect, the new code will manage growth and confront some of our community's most pressing challenges head-on. The new code will direct most growth to nodes and corridors, preserve neighborhood character, and provide funding streams to create affordable homes and preserve open space, while simultaneously moving forward toward a more appropriate urban form for our rapidly growing city. Finally, as Erin mentioned, the new code should not be static, and we will also be monitoring that to hold the city accountable, that the code is doing all that it can to ensure that we are meeting the goals as agreed upon in GVL 2040. We ask for your vote tonight to adopt the proposed Greenville Development Code and zoning map, and we thank you for your leadership and service to our community.
Thank you. Holly Douglas.
Hi, Holly Douglas. I live at 101 Kimwood Lane in the Northman neighborhood, and I'm speaking in favor of the proposed zoning code. Like others up here, I believe this has been a Herculean effort on behalf of Shannon and her staff to develop a zoning code that is appropriate for the city and the growth that we have experienced, and so we can manage our continued placement on top-10 list across the country and the in-migration that comes with that. I think it's an avant-garde approach to planning in general and the iterations it's gone through and the changes that have been adopted reflect a team and a staff that is responsive but not reactive, and I think that's a good thing. I studied planning and development in graduate school, and that involved a lot of travel to other cities, including Charlotte and Atlanta and DC and Bethesda, Charleston, and looking at what worked and what did not work. And if you look at neighborhoods like Myers Park in Charlotte or the Virginia Highlands neighborhood in Atlanta or Decatur, Georgia, or the Glover Park in DC, and what you like about these neighborhoods, intrinsic or even, you may not even be aware of it. This plan will allow us to create neighborhoods like that and preserve our existing neighborhoods better than the plan that is in place currently that we have simply outgrown. I have heard folks conflagrate infrastructure capacity with zoning in this discussion, and I think that, and you guys know that, zoning does not dictate infrastructure policy. Absent full moratoriums, which generally exacerbate housing issues, which is one of the things this thing largely seeks to cure, smart growth is born of smart zoning. The development is coming whether you plan for it or not, and this would just allow us to have more intentional development of our city. You have fees and tap fees and green space requirements and landscape and buffering mandates and all the things to allow infrastructure to not be overburdened. And so they are intrinsically linked, but one does not inform the other. So in short, I support the plan as others do, and I appreciate your time in hearing me out. Thank you.
Thank you. Danielle Fontaine.
Hello, I'm Danielle Fontaine. I reside at 236 Red Street, Unit 204. I'm here to speak in favor of the new development code. I'm an architect who's had the opportunity to live in various cities in four different countries, and I can say that Greenville stands out by how gracefully it is growing. Some of it is lucky timing. Greenville came of age at a good time, but it's not all luck. Greenville had to make the best of this timing by learning from the mistake of older siblings, we might say. It has done this to great effect so far and continues to do it as exemplified by this new development code, which will go a long way to ensure that we do not become Charlotte or Atlanta as many seem to fear. I don't have any such worries at all. We're on a good path. I want to applaud particularly the height bonus for multifamily residential developments. That's a very creative solution to bring us more units of affordable housing at no cost to taxpayers, and it's not a mandate. So great creative solutions. But I'll echo what two other speakers already said, that we need to do much more in that department. Affordable housing is vital element of a healthy city, and we must use all the tools at our disposal, and we must look for new tools. I'm enthusiastically in favor of new development code. I applaud the planning department for the enormous amount of community outreach they did in the process of developing the code. This is not all about buildings. It's about people, and we're all in this together. And I thank everybody for their great efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jack Logan.
I'm Jack Logan. I live at 5051 Old Augusta Road in the county of Greenville. Listening to the press and talk about Greenville bringing the top 10 across the country. It turns my attention back to the city. We lose a great city manager, and we're going to lose a great chief of police with crime down. My concern is who's going to follow Mr. McDonald, and my concern, who's going to follow the chief of police? And the fact that policies to become chief of police is very disturbing to me because we did not have a deputy chief until Chief Thompson, that position was made by the city. And it's unfair for those people who's working, who's working now and who has retired in the sheriff's office to not be eligible to become the chief. We need someone from right here at home to become chief. And the reason why I say that, just the other day, there was a bad accident on North or South Pleasantburg by the Fresh Market, and those officers out there with the traffic was backed up. They did not know the roads to see the traffic through because most of them were living in the city or living in the county, and that's unfair. Again, I do want to compliment Mr. McDonald and the chief for crime being ignored. But I want to make sure that it's fair to become chief of police in the city of Greenville. Anyone can be a deputy chief in public, county, or whatever. That doesn't mean they couldn't qualify to be the chief of police for the city of Greenville. Or where they come from, Atlanta, one of those cities where they have hats on, and they have a press conference. But that don't mean they qualify to be the chief of police in Greenville. I want Greenville to stay safe. I've said it to Mr. McDonald over and over. I believe in three words, law and order. And that's what make a good city. Those people over the southern side, I just spoke to them the other night. They do what they're supposed to do. They look out for each other. That's why the crime rate is down. And I wish every city councilman would make their constituents aware to, just like the southern side, they look out for each other. And that even boosts the crime rate in the city of Greenville. But again, I want to thank Mr. McDonald for his service and the chief, and I just hope that this council hires someone that can follow his footsteps. And I thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bruce Wilson.
Good evening, Bruce Wilson, 14 Freestone Street. Before I get started, I'm city manager. I want to thank you for your service. I want to thank you for always taking my phone calls and working on issues that I've brought to you, whether you wanted to or not, you've still done it in a prompt manner. I also want to thank the outgoing chief of police, which brings me here tonight, Mayor Protem. If you will remember, council, before the chief was hired as the chief, I was opposed of him being hired as the chief for the city of Greenville. I opposed that. But once he became the chief, started working with him, started having dialogue, which created an avenue of a relationship that when the community, as a community activist, I would get phone calls about certain situations. And having that relationship with him allowed me to be able to contact him directly and try to resolve some of these matters throughout the community. It was because we had that relationship. I'm afraid, from what I've been told, is that there are some type of conditions or a piece of a policy that will restrict certain individuals within this area from possibly becoming a new chief. And if that is true, I don't know if it's true. But if it is, I think that that policy should be changed because having someone that knows the area, having someone that knows, and I'm just only one of several community activists around here who gets phone calls from the community that who could relay that information and try to get assistance with the city or with the chief of police versus having to go to the media. Sometimes it's good to have things done behind closed doors. Now, I'm always willing to go to the media. I think everybody knows that. Sometimes it's good to have things taken care of. I have worked with this chief on several issues, several that you've never heard about, and we were able to get it taken care of because we had that relationship, because we knew each other. It didn't mean that we agreed. It didn't mean that we completely got along. We had that respect to work for the community. So I'm asking Mr. City Manager, I don't know how true it is, but if there is a policy that restricts individuals from being able to apply for the chief of police here in Greenville, I think it should be changed. It would be a great idea to bring someone that is already here so they do not have to learn this area and don't have to learn the community activists. Because one thing I will do in a heartbeat is protest and march. But if I don't have to, I don't want to. Thank you, and I appreciate you guys. Have a great night.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. We will look, since both of you complained about that, we will look and investigate and make sure that we are on the right road for that. Public hearings, we have three public hearings for abandonment of property. And the first one is abandonment of Goodwin Street, Article A-B-1, 2023. Okay? And do we have anybody that... We have anyone, one of our... Okay, come on, Paul. If you can give us a little overview of what's being abandoned so we can move to the public hearing. So if anybody wishes to speak for or against either one.
Right, so abandonment of Goodwin Street between Rutherford and Pete Hollis, surrounded by a single property owner and signed off by the adjacent property owners as well for this petition.
Okay.
Do we have an active, do we have a permanent application in on this for townhomes? Or you have something in on this?
There is a plan. It's part of the packet, I believe. But I don't believe it's a site plan yet, no.
Okay.
It's not far from...
There was something in there about it.
From Starbucks and all of those new apartments and everything built up there.
That's correct.
Okay, anyone speaking in favor? Okay, come on. Please give your name and address.
Hi, my name's Matt Carter, 12 East Laney Drive in Greenville. Not as much to speak in favor as just to answer questions. Yes, there is a townhome development plan. That site plan has been reviewed by staff a number of times. We do anticipate being in front of the Planning Commission in the August meeting. We have to have it turned in in July. It was very well reviewed by the community. We had everyone out to my office. There were no negative comments. The church next door was a little bit concerned that they're using the Salvation Army property for some of their activities that go out the back door, and we made provision for that as well, and they're very much on board as well. So really, I'm here just on behalf of Salvation Army, the Horowitzes, Tatum Stone, Dan Rigby, they've all signed and asked, all those property owners adjacent have asked that this road be closed. And yes, it is in consideration of that. A number of them have been essentially landlocked anyway because Goodwin Street's of really no repair or use. We also have David Grafus here, who's the engineer, if you had any questions for him.
Anyone have any questions for Matt or anyone? Is there anyone in opposition to this abandonment? Anyone in opposition to this abandonment? Anyone in opposition? Hearing no one, we'll move to the next public hearing and abandonment of Holiday Street, AB-2-2023. Paul.
So this situation is similar. Property owners on either side of Holiday Street are one owner, and we have a petition with the property owners for approval for this one. This is to serve a future development as well.
Okay. Did they have any conversation with the people in the community? Do we know whether, are they developing anything on this?
Yes, they are, yes.
Okay, and they had conversation, I guess, with...
Well, they haven't finished their conversations, but...
Okay. Anyone, council, have any questions concerning... Is there anyone who needs to speak in favor of this abandonment? Anyone? Is there anyone here in opposition to this abandonment of Holiday Street? Anyone in opposition? Hearing no one in opposition, we'll move to item number nine, C, abandonment of Alvin's Alley, AB-3-2023. Paul.
Alvin's Alley, this one is, you have separate property owners on either side, and there is an abandonment plat that's part of today's packet that shows how old Alvin's Alley would be split in the middle. And the affected property owners have also signed an affirmative on the petition for this abandonment.
All right, have they had any, is any development going on in there or something?
Yes, called the Park Hill Townhomes, I believe, is the...
Park Hill Townhomes?
And, yeah. So this has been in front of Planning Commission, that Park Hill Townhomes has.
Okay. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this abandonment on Alvin Alley? Okay, anyone wish to speak in opposition to this abandonment? Opposition? Okay, hearing no one, council, do you have any questions or anything?
Yeah, I have one quick question. The, on all of these, there are a few lots that no longer will have external access. Is that a problem? Like on this one, Area E, for example?
That was not previously served by, Alvin's Alley is not usable at the moment. No, they don't use Alvin's Alley at the...
And same with others as well as...
Yeah, but they are combined with a recombination plat to serve those purposes.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, we'll go on to item number 10, recognitions and appointments for boards and commissions. And we have several appointments and recommendations of appointments here. I'd like to recognize councilmember Dorothy Dow.
Excuse me, yes, I'd like to recommend for the Design Review Board Neighborhood, recommending Mitch Lady to a full term which began on May 1, 2023, and ends April 30, 2025.
Any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Okay, last time. Any other nominations for the Design Review Board Neighborhood, two-year term? All those in favor of the recommendation of Ms. Dow, please say aye.
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 opposed? Okay, so we appointed Mitch Lady. Okay, Springwood Cemetery Advisory Committee, Councilmember Deворcas.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Fleming. First, I'd like to, on behalf of council, thank Mr. Charles West for his service on the Springwood Cemetery Advisory Committee. Is Mr. West here by any chance? We just appreciate him for serving. And then we have two recommendations for Springwood Cemetery. We have Edward Stoll to begin May 1 and April 30, 2025, and then Mandy Merritt to complete an unexpired term ending April 30, 2024. And that is our recommendation for Springwood Cemetery Advisory Committee.
Any other recommendations? Are there any other recommendations? Any other recommendation? Hearing none, then all those in favor of the recommendation of Edward Stahl and Mandy Merritt, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstained.
Abstained.
Why?
You abstained.
I know, he's one of those brothers. I don't want to vote for my brother.
Oh, my Lord. Okay, all right. Okay, we will go to our recommendation, our consent agenda. Clerk. Question to approve?
Say it.
Okay, clerk, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Deворcas. Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brisington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Tim Fleming.
Aye. Okay, our regular agenda item, 14-8.
An ordinance to appropriate $57,358,530 for the fiscal year 2023-24 capital budget for the fiscal year 2023-24, 27-28 capital improvement program.
So moved.
Second.
So moved, probably said, clerk, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Deворcas.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoll.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
And Fleming.
Aye. Item 14A passes item 14B.
An ordinance to provide for the adoption of the city operating budget as execution in effect for the fiscal period, July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so moved in second. Clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoll.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Fleming.
Aye. Item 14B passes item 14C.
An ordinance to appropriate Chapter 19 Land Management Ordinance of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Greenville and to replace with Chapter 19 Greenville Development Code.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, clerk will call the roll. Item 14D.
I think we need to drag this out a little more.
I have a presentation already, if you want it.
Okay, anybody have any questions? Shannon. Okay, she has a book of notes ready?
Oh, I'm ready.
Okay, she's ready. If not, the clerk will call the roll. Shannon, you stand there.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoll.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Fleming.
Aye. And next, we have, um, places on the... Okay. And item 14D.
An ordinance to replace the City of Greenville official zoning map with a new official zoning map consistent with the Greenville Development Code.
So moved.
Second.
So moved and properly second. Any discussion? And we, anybody want to hear Shannon's notes? Okay, if not, clerk will call a roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoll.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Fleming.
Aye. 14D, and Shannon, you may have a few minutes to say something.
You may say something. Okay, so before I turn it back over to you for this evening, I did have some prepared remarks that I wanted to say about a thank you throughout this process. I have said it before, but I cannot emphasize enough how much work and commitment it takes from the community, from the community, to obey an entire development code and rezone the city. Most cities across the country are using outdated codes originally adopted in the 1980s and oftentimes earlier. I think we have been said that some of our codes go back to the 70s, but remember, I was born in the 70s, so not all bad. That was cool. And they have been updated in piecemeal fashion over the decades. Communities shy away from a full code rewrite because of the workload, concern over public discourse, and fear of change. Many update efforts start strong but lose momentum over endless small details, letting the perfect get in the way of the good. With Greenville 2040, the Greenville community demonstrated its readiness and desire to do things differently and to tackle issues head-on. I am so proud of this community and the code that we have achieved together by collaborating, listening, talking, and trusting one another. We know the new code is not perfect, but the city has committed itself to reviewing and refining the code on an ongoing basis in the coming years to ensure that it works for Greenville and achieves the outcome that our community deserves. Now, I think you know that I've said up here before, and I'd like to take one last opportunity to express my appreciation and gratitude to everyone who is involved with this project. To the code consultants, CZB, Code Studio, Ingles Planning and Design, and everyone else for being such terrific partners and delivering this code and map on such a tight schedule. Thank you, Thomas, Larry, and Christie.
Go, Shannon. Come on, Shannon. Go.
To the members of our planning commission, who are volunteers appointed by city council for their time and diligence reviewing the code, staff reports, changes, and numerous public comments on this project. We are so fortunate to have our planning commission, so thank you to each one of them for their time involved in this process.
Are any of them present?
But they can get hired.
Yes.
They can, yes. To city council for your support of the city staff throughout this process, thank you. And for helping to share information about the code and for ensuring that your constituents' concerns were heard throughout the process. Each one of you were instrumental in the successful passage of this code this evening, and I want you to know how much we sincerely appreciate your support. Thank you. And it's not just the planning staff that got us here tonight. Building and codes, who are our partners in all of this, so much of what happens in the city would not be possible without them. Thank you to our community development team that has embraced and informed this process, helping to ensure all in the community are heard and served. Thank you to our economic development team that is always ready to pitch in and help and push us to think outside the box. Thank you to our other partners, specifically our engineering team that was a significant contributor to this document and helped to make sure that these policies work and can be implemented. To our GIS and IT team, I'm pretty sure every time they got an email from me, they did not want to open it. They had emergency mapping requests and last-minute geospatialists announced these questions over the last several months. To our legal team, to make sure that we stay in conformance and out of trouble and for being there to make sure that we got this far, thank you. To our emergency personnel and police and fire who helped us stay safe and never abate our capacity during all of our meetings the last few months. To our neighborhood engagement manager and our communications team, Beth Brotherton and NJ Simpson, to support us throughout this journey every step of the way. To our city clerk's office, who have helped to promote these ordinances for city council to make sure that we don't have to come back here and do it again. And I'm sure I forgot many people. But to everyone else on staff, I truly appreciate your contributions. It's an honor and a privilege to work beside each of you every day. But there's one group left. And every one of them looks here with me tonight. I'd like the Greenville planning staff to see them.
Planning staff.
This, to me, is the most significant group that deserves thanks out of, from me, other than the community, obviously. The effort and dedication that you've shown to this project is unmatched. Every single one of you have been there to support me, the city, and our community every step of the way. The way that you approach this process is unparalleled, and I don't think would ever be matched again. I want you to note, in front of all these people, my sincere thanks to each and every one of you for the job that you do every day. Thank you. This has been a huge project that required much personal sacrifice. The dedication by the City of Greenville staff should not go unrecognized. As I always say, when given the opportunity, please thank them for their service. This has been a monumental occasion, I think, for us as a community, and I couldn't be more proud to have led such a great team to get us to this point. I'm really excited about the next six months as we start to work with the code and the map and to start to really see it come to life. We're already starting to see projects come in, and we see that the new code is working. And that is what is best for all, is that we really wanted to create something for this community that works and is responsive to what they wanted to see. And I feel like we have tried our best, and I'm excited to see where Greenville goes over the next few months and the next years with this code, because we will be back before you, because we know that there will have to be changes. But I'm excited to work with our community and see that, because as we've learned, it takes a relationship and conversation along the way to make sure that we get it right. So thank you very much for giving me this few minutes of personal pleasure to be able to say this, you know, personal privilege to be able to have time to say to you all really what this means for our city, our community, and what it means to us as your staff. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. And I told you it wouldn't be too much to, um, say thank you. Now we go to our new business. First reading.
Item 15A, an ordinance to appropriate easement in favor of Duke Energy Carolinas LLC for the purpose of providing utility service to city property located at the Greenville Zoo, 150 Cleveland Park Drive.
Okay, Paul.
We need a motion and a second please.
Second.
Thank you.
Yeah. We just have the motion. Is there anything, y'all have any questions or comments?
What are they doing through there?
It's our first reading, so you got to explain it.
Okay, so part of an upgrade for reliability for, for power service for the zoo.
Okay.
Include the entire easement.
Any questions? No, no. Clerk, call a roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington. Councilmember Stoll. Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Fleming.
Aye. Item 15A passes item 15B.
An ordinance to abandon Godwin's, Goodwin Street.
So moved. Second.
All right. Okay, any other questions or comments? If not, clerk will call a roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoll.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Fleming.
Aye. Item 15C.
An ordinance to abandon Holiday Street.
So moved.
He's second.
Second.
Okay, moves in second. Clerk will call a roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoll.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Fleming.
Aye. Item 15C passes item 15D.
An ordinance to abandon Alvin's Alley.
So moved. Second.
So moved in second. Clerk will call a roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington. Councilmember Stoll.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Fleming.
Aye. Item 15D passes item 15E.
An ordinance to annex approximately 1.69 acres of old property located on Conwell Street and to provide its own destination of R N 2 or R N A.
So moved.
Second, and I have a question.
Okay, question?
Um, and Shannon, forgive me if I'm misreading here, when I was staring at this, a portion of this, if y'all can go back to the script, stop that. One of these parcels, is a portion of a parcel going to be split on this, Shannon?
Which parcel?
Well, that's a good question. I'm staring at this. Okay, the one, um, the last one, ending in 2000. So I guess we need something that shows the tax map numbers. We might not have that. So we're, we're annexing a portion of a parcel.
I think that it was already, a portion of that parcel was previously, previously annexed, and now we're just annexing the rest of the parcel.
Okay, I'm not sure which one, 2000, is on this view, but, okay.
We are going to not have a parcel that won't be in the city. We are...
This is rectifying that.
This is rectifying that.
Okay.
And it's also going to be, um, re-subdivided. It's going, that's going to come in for development. And so as part of that, we'll ensure that there's no split parcels where parcels outside the city and parcels in the city.
All right, good. I couldn't, I guess so we're remedying what I was concerned about.
Yes, we are. And then we're going to remedy anything that we created as a problem. And then we're going to do it all over again. We still don't submit it anyways.
Okay, all right, good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, clerk will call a roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington. Councilmember Stoll. Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Fleming.
Aye. Item 15F.
An ordinance to appropriate $3,930,495 in the Missland News Grant Fund and Waste Rather Fund for South downtown sewer improvements.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any questions?
These are ARPA funds, yes?
Correct.
Good.
Okay, clerk will call a roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoll.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Fleming.
Aye. Item 15F passes. Now, 16 new business resolutions, first and final reading. Clerk will call 16A.
Resolutions to appropriate memorandum of understanding and automatic aid agreement between the City of Greenville and on behalf of the Greenville Fire Department and Greer Fire Department for certain emergency incidents within the designated areas of the city and Greer.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so moved in second. Any questions of, of chief? Okay, all right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No.
Thank you. Item 16A passes 16B.
A resolution approved by the Housing Authority of the City of Greenville, South Carolina, is not to exceed $20 million in family housing revenue bonds. This would be Cherokee Landing Apartments Project Series.
So moved. Second.
Okay, question. Is it 2 million or 20 million?
That's 20 million.
Okay.
All right, this, this project is not in the city. Directed to the county.
Sorry. Okay, but I...
In fact, the tax code requires both a city council approval, uh, because the Housing Authority is a, is a city entity as well as a county council approval. So we're required to get both councils.
All right, no problem. All right, it's been already motions, the clerk. All those in favor of resolution 16B, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, all right, that passes. Item 16C.
A resolution of support for the city clerk in submitting an application for candidacy of the Office of Vice President to the International Institute of Municipal Clerks and to support her ascension of the Office of President.
Some moves.
Ooh, that's good.
I know, right? I'm excited about this one.
Um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, no one. City clerk, please stand up, honey. We are so proud of her running for the Office of Vice President of the International Institute of Municipal Clerk in the nation. We're excited about that. If she wins, she gonna be first vice president. Oh, we going somewhere. I am so proud of you.
We do have to win the election first.
Okay. Let us know if there's anybody we know. All right, now we have a resolution for the purpose of authorizing and nonprofit. We got something going here, too. Okay?
Okay, so this is 16D.
Sorry.
Now, your fine resolution for the purpose of authorizing the establishment of a nonprofit corporation for economic development purposes.
Some move. Second.
Okay, John.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. So I will, my brevity here is not reflective of the hundreds or maybe dozens, probably over 100 hours that we put in collectively as staff, stakeholders, on what I am so excited to present to you tonight. We have an opportunity here to do something really special. And so we just did the development code, a sophisticated development code, and this city also deserves to have a sophisticated structure to its economic development efforts. We have sophisticated people, but now is a time that we can, we do in that department, we have great people in that department, but we need to have a structure that will reflect the sophistication of the city. If you remember when Greenville 2040 was released, the three pillars were very, very important, but all of us said, hey, you know, we really need to do a little more about economic development. So this council then put in place a strategic plan, and one of the, one of the goals of that strategic plan, the Economic Development Strategic Plan, was put to put together, Megan, you're getting ahead of me here, was to put together a structure that will reflect the goals of this plan, something that has the ability to address business recruitment, address retail restaurant recruitment, real estate, mapping what we want in terms of investment for our cities, innovation entrepreneur support, small business, last but not least, minority business, how we advance and support those goals. So looking at page three, Megan, if you're running this, there we go. So you remember the Economic Development Strategic Goals, and that plan talked about us being a hub, diversifying our economy. That is, making sure we've got headquarters and small businesses that are thriving. Talent development, people right here, diversity, equity, inclusion, not only is just one goal, but something that is reflected amongst the whole effort here. Talk about livability and what that means, and that is transportation affordability, green spaces that are found in our Greenville 2040. Lifestyle destination, quality of life, and then real estate development. That is, how can we have the efforts that we can make the deals that are most beneficial to our citizens, and then the structure to support that strategy? So how do we achieve those goals? Megan, we'll go to the next slide. We need to focus on the city of Greenville, so we have great economic development partners, GADC, Commerce, Upstate Alliance, but only we can focus only on the city of Greenville, and that's what we're going to try to do even better here, implementing that strategic plan, being laser focused on our goals. And so, next page, what we did is we really went out and talked to stakeholders, benchmarked other economic development organizations, and looked at our options. Options were keep it in-house. You'll see on the next page, breaking this out into an external organization that would allow us to do a lot more with economic development. So establishing a 501(c)(3) that then would be overseen by this council, but have an independent board that would be appointed by this board. And of course, we need to talk about bylaws, and that'll all come together with council's input, for sure. So the recommendation, again, the brevity I'm putting into this is not reflective of the hours put into it, but the recommendation is to create an independent 501(c)(3) that would be called the Greenville City Economic Development Corporation, to be modeled after other successful economic development programs throughout the country, and then allows us to focus on the issues that are important to us. It also allows us to receive private investment, like other economic development organizations around the country. What does that do? That allows us to increase resources, increase people, increase quality of people so that we can address the issues for economic development. So if you look at the board, if you look at the staff structure, you can see here, you'd have a board that would be appointed by us, you would have a president and CEO, you would have an investor relations manager. But what I'm most excited about is that, as at the bottom level, you look at here, you, we've got some folks doing some of these things, but not all these things. So you have someone that's dedicated to business recruitment, someone dedicated to retail recruitment and restaurant recruitment, someone dedicated to marketing our efforts, someone dedicated to small business and minority business, someone dedicated to working with Next on I and E, Innovation Entrepreneurship, and someone dedicated to closing the best deals possible for the citizens of this city that they deserve. Now, the next page, you'll see, this is very important, I won't go through every single one of these, but every year, this organization will report to its board, but it would also report to this council. So this council, though it had, though there's an independent board, this council has purview over the board, and this board and, and organization, and the organization is charged with seeing through the Economic Development Strategic Plan that this council adopted and we put forth. So you can see the metrics to measure all those successes, and annual report that we delivered us from companies attract, attracted to new jobs from minority-owned businesses to venture capital investments. So we will have a clear understanding of the successes and even non-successes, and where we need to work harder with this organization. So I am excited to discuss with this council and then also thank this council for your input, for your time to make sure that we get this right, and I cannot thank you all enough for putting up with me as we go through this whole journey of creating an economic development team and organization that matches the needs and sophistication and the future of the city of Greenville. So as you'll see on the last side, Greenville City Economic Development Corporation. With that, Mayor Pro Tem Fleming, I'm happy to answer any questions.
John, this is just magnificent, and you did a marvelous job.
Thank you.
And don't, don't keep apologizing. Yes, you have worked on our marriage. But anything is great, you gotta, you gotta work for it, and I appreciate this because you didn't just tell us an idea, but you went out and helped to make it happen. And I know some of the rest of you have something nice to say to John.
Question, two questions.
Yes.
Why Greenville City instead of City of Greenville?
I thought that Greenville City, well, not I, but Anthony and the folks we talked to thought that the City of Greenville sounded a little too passive for what we're trying to accomplish here. Greenville City, we are affirming our position in the economic development world.
Okay.
We're going to be working for the citizens of Greenville and Greenville City Economic Development Corporation.
You got it. All right, go back one slide. When you say minority-owned businesses, minority-owned businesses, you know, do you include women in that? Where do you, where do women own businesses?
Well, I would say women would be a part of that, absolutely.
I mean, we're not the minority by any shape in the state.
Yeah.
So it needs to read minority and women, M W B is what we typically use in the vernacular.
Yeah, and I think what the great thing about this is we're at the beginning stages. We're authorizing the creation of this. So I suspect, Mayor Pro Tem Fleming, I'll be bothering you all so much more if we make sure that as we iron out all these wrinkles.
M W B E, John.
Yes, ma'am, so we will get this, we will make sure that this is, this is, I think this is an out, I think this is a great start, and we will be working with each one of you and stakeholders to make sure that this is, reflects exactly what we want it to be.
And I think it's a great start, too. Thank you so very much. Anyone else want to say something?
This being established as a c, as a c)(3), not a c)(6).
Yes, c)(3), that's exactly the right.
Great work, brother.
Come on, John.
Thank you. Thank you all.
We got to vote on it. We got.
Resolution.
Resolution. We already passed it, because we knew he was going to. He didn't even remember. Yeah, I voted out, and y'all passed it. He says, okay, and I said, come on, John. Anyway, but thank you so much. I appreciate that. This is, okay, all in favor, just to be sure. All in favor, say aye. Okay, item 16D passes. Resolution, okay. All right. City manager, John? Yes, city of.
I'm just asking, I have a new development code and a new economic development structure, so we'll call it a night.
Same thing I'm doing, but I'd yield to Councilmember Gibson, and if he doesn't say what I'm going to say, I'm going to say it.
Okay.
I just want to, want to let everybody know that we had a great jazz festival this past Saturday. It was outstanding. We had, there were so many people in the city who came out. There were so many people who came from Charlotte and Atlanta and other places because they had heard about it. There were people who, while I was out there, who walked by and heard the music and stopped for three, four hours. I talked to a young lady who was about 20 years old. She said, I never listen to this music, but this sounds really good. Stayed for three hours listening to it. I want to thank city staff, and I'm going to go sort of through everybody who had a role in this. Certainly Public Works, certainly the police and the fire department, certainly the Beth Brotherton and her staff in communications, but the lion's share of thanks to this goes to Tara Eker and the.
Get up, Tom.
This is, is my understanding, this is the first time that we have done a festival from scratch. We have taken other festivals and sort of tweaked them and made them our own, but this is the first one that we've done from scratch. And it was a huge success, and we are looking to make it even bigger next year. So great thanks to everybody who was involved with it. Also want to thank, we had a committee of people who were helping us and advising on this.
Okay.
All those members who helped, had helped, thank to them as well. It was just a great, great, great event, and I have, I have upon very good source that you could hear the music, even in some of the neighborhoods.
That's very true.
And there were, there were some of our citizens who were able to enjoy a beverage on their porch and listen to the jazz music emanating from downtown. So great, great, great day, great, great event. Thank you all.
Okay, John.
And thank you for that, Councilor Gibson. In my, getting this right, I inevitably forgot to thank John McDonough for your leadership in this whole effort as well, so thank you for that.
Thank you, John. All right, anyone else? Okay, so we're going to have a great weekend, this coming weekend, with our Juneteenth event on, it's a gala on Friday night, and then there's downtown Saturday for the Juneteenth, and then there's others all over the place. We have a Juneteenth, Parks and Recreation is putting together, they're working with the National Council of Negro Women and the NAACP to work on student scholarships, and we have students who we presented scholarships, and we would be privileged to have Philip Boykin, a renowned singer on Broadway, who's received many numerous awards, will be coming home to honor these young people as well on Friday. Look forward to seeing y'all at the Welcome Center at 4:00 p.m., if I'm not mistaken, etc. Will? And did I say it all right, Will? Thank you. Anyway, we appreciate anything. Our hearts and minds are clear? Because I told them we gonna go home the same day we got here. Okay, all right, if not, all the journey.